Hello, thank you very much. I would like to call this commission hearing to a war. The next business meeting is Thursday, March 6th at noon and 111 North Front Street, second floor, room 205. The next hearing meeting is Thursday, March 20th. And this is where we're at today. I would like to run a stat. Are you sure? You swear or affirm to tell the testimony to the best your ability?
I do, I check with myself.
I would like to have the motion to approve the staff protocols. I would like also to introduce the initiative to take. Well, firstly, I haven't done the cherry on top of it. Why, Dan? I'm Stuart Givney.
To the Cababa, make us a law.
Alright, so we have a motion and a second. Always a favor, please indicate a saying. We also have them to seek an approval for the meeting minutes last meeting. Alright, so on favor, please indicate a statement. Great. I think that will bring us down to applications for rich tickets.
Alright, and I'll just confirm, no bill of course today. And then our first application, so we've had a few applications that moved to have approval at the business meetings. So we'll be skipping ahead to number three, which is 686 South Champion Avenue.
Hello. Good, how are you guys? Wonderful. I'm Amanda Williams. I do, thank you. I'm actually just their designer.
Okay, so this application is for returning three wood openings at the east elevation of the addition to original sizes. And to install a double sidelined windows from approved windows list. The proposed author removed vinyl siding installed with LP smart size, more lock lap siding with a six inch reveal. And then in painting the new siding and then a trim and it'd be a store for Roy Crock Pruder is the name there. So at this this meeting, the commission asked if the addition slide center window would be addressed. The commission asked if the applicant is planning to improve the window or asked if the applicant could include window details such as the header jam and sill details. And then the commission asked if the other measuring areas that were painted black will also be repainted that same measuring color that is proposed. So just as a recap, this application in July 2019, an application to replace non-original rear siding with new LP smart siding at the two rear enclosed porches, repair of existing wood windows, and then replacing one vinyl window with a new custom made wood window was staff approved. More recently, an application for a new garage was reviewed and approved in December 2021. So code violation for unapproved exterior alterations was issued in April 2022. And then following that, a recommendation is to return the rear enclosed porch windows to the historic opening sizes with the window selection to improve windows list to match the one over one configuration. And then recommend that any newer go wood grain vinyl siding, the rear enclosed porches be removed. They're replaced with either new wood or smooth cement issue siding. And then recommending the area that have been painted black to be repainted to match the original stone, red concrete color, or include paper removal proposal. So the staff recommendation at this time is to recommend continuing application COA 2500059 at 686 South Champion Avenue in the Wilkes-Allen District. I am trying to submit additional information at this meeting. The basis for the staff recommendation is the CD code 316.11 standards alteration, specifically numbers 2, 4, 6, 11, and 12. And then the HRC guidelines regarding wood siding, building vinyl siding, 18, and then the amendments to the guidelines for artificial siding and then additional specifications for artificial siding. But that will turn over the commission.
Sure. So again, I'm not the property owner. I'm just a design consultant for them to help them get through this process. When they purchase the property, you can see the teal picture at the top. And unfortunately, is the only photo of reference that I have. The owner is stating that the middle window that you're recommending change was already replaced by the other owner. And they chose to replace these windows with the sliding window to match what the last person did in the middle. So we understand that you want this returned to the three original sizes and we understand why. But we have no idea what was done before he purchased the property in that middle area. I have no photos of reference. We just have no idea what needs to go there because that has been there. To our knowledge, always.
Are those three windows, the ones that you're plan change, you're ready to go back?
Yes, we're, yeah, we're totally fine with going back to that original picture. I think that what's holding us up is that window in the middle that was changed previous to them owning it.
I think the only other owner who has we have that maybe is boarded over. Unfortunately, I don't think we have a clear indication of what exactly was there.
Did you go around and see some more?
I can do that. I guess the question is, you know, if he bought the home in the state as is, we're asking him to spend additional money to reverse something that someone else did when he thought he was doing the right thing to match what someone else did. So I think it kind of becomes a like, whose responsibility is this? And how big of a can of worms are we going to open? We want to get rid of the code violations. We also can't ask somebody to, I think, spend an exorbitant amount of money to return something to its original state that they didn't touch. He is willing to change everything that they did change.
So stop, like, what happens in cases like that? When something was a code violation from before, or we didn't even know what was a code violation?
So in this instance, since there was the old change, but then the new, the old change being, let's say this, there's a sliding window there before, is that right?
When he purchased the property.
And then a new sliding window was installed.
And it's funny, I have a little insight because I lived in the neighborhood at the time that the owner that was doing the teal renovation was working on it. And he sold it to him half renovated, I think, because he couldn't get through this process. So I don't know when that middle window was installed, but it has been there since he purchased the property.
So they didn't install any replacement windows to the sliding?
No, they only replaced those three windows you see there to match the slider that was in the middle.
That's part of our consideration. There's a little bit of interpretation whether, you know, something, let's say, was installed and it's not a window we improved, but then it was replaced again to match the window we wouldn't improve. And you have to figure out whether the new recent installation is compatible or not. If it's been there for years and it wasn't caught at the time, then it could potentially stay, but whenever the new replacement is done, then it would need to be brought back to compatibility.
You know, it's a hard situation.
Was this a regional duplex or was it always a single family?
So I have no awareness of that. I know when he purchased it, it was already opened up into a single family. But I don't know that middle renovator, which would have. There's a wraparound porch, so there are two doors, but one goes to a living room and one goes to a dining room. So it's, I guess it's possible that at one point it was a duplex. I just don't know. There is, there might be a listing photo just on Zillow of the front, yeah.
I think you do make a point there. The middle with the. Down the line, but I would suspect that fully the area in Kennesaw District. But we don't really have evidence of that, so. They are.
But there's nothing in our files that says that we have to pay the consideration of what existed from the. So you buy a start from buying, driving a violent. So we're somewhat learning.
Yeah, you know, and.
The only good things that we may know is that they're right.
Yes. And it also decided.
Yeah, this.
And they, so the only issues that have been the window. And since the only picture that we have of it is boarded over, it's hard for us to prove what was there.
But I think we, I think we know the story.
It probably wasn't this window.
Yes, I feel agree.
I totally agree.
Well, the previous owner made the changes, but this.
When did your other five?
I want to say it was during pandemic, so 2021-ish.
When did the teal person make?
Oh, gosh, so I lived in the neighborhood in 2015 when they were working on that.
It's not historical, but it can be asked a new owner to the mistake of someone else.
You know, I know that this is hard because.
But we want to be.
Yeah.
From a staff perspective, it's more so if, let's say, you know, that sliding window is there, but then a new sliding window was put in place, then that's, you know, territory where we need to address it. If that sliding window has been there since 2015, it's been long enough where I would think from the worst, I probably wouldn't have someone do anything until it needs to be replaced. And then once it does need to be replaced, then we need to replace that.
Can you help with the P?
Yes, for sure. So I, you know, I think unfortunately this owner bought this from the previous owner just thinking he could like for like what that owner was doing, assuming that it was approved. Obviously, it was not. So he went with the straight black. What we're proposing, the color in the garage was approved. And I'd really like to, I feel like taking that multiple layers of wild paint off of that stone is going to be unreasonable. So my proposal is, could we paint the stone the same pewter color as the garage, which takes it back to a stone color, just not original stone, unfortunately.
Yeah, previously painted, so do a lot of it was perfect stuff. But anyway, previously painted, it's very do a lot that we've painted. But for color similar to what the material would have been, it did not have been. And it looks like even in that kind of teal, it was already painted then, right?
Yeah.
So it was, may have been painted prior to the historic area. So we have a problem with that.
Okay.
I don't, and it was really black.
You're not alone. The window trims in the entire home are black, so we'd like to keep that. And then, you know, as requested, change all of those painted stone areas to that pewter stone color. That would match the garage as well.
Yeah, yeah. So basically where we're at is we're replacing siding. We're going to repaint the cast stone and replace that window with the three original.
Correct.
We need additional information.
I know the one that I was saying that the commission had asked at the business meeting, most details of the windows, the jams, the banks were requested. So I want to make sure the commission would still be more comfortable in having this material sent in, whether to staff or to come back.
The window installer did provide me with those. They did not get loaded in the portal. I will load those ASAP. Can I ask, does that satisfy the code violation?
Yes, from my understanding, these are all the code violations that I'm aware of for this property. Of course, double check with code enforcement, but as far as I know, yeah, this is what doesn't really to us.
Great, thank you so much.
So what's the?
So there's final sheet details that they made it from the window.
We made it standard.
I think I think up to the start, you know, from image. For case number, the ERCO A240559, 66 South Captain Avenue. I make a motion to move this application to staff approval, specifically for things that they expect they have the three windows. Or the new windows that are outside, now siding windows will be replaced with three original windows. Right, and for those windows, the staff will get from the applicant the right worksheets and details. So they'll be staff approved. They will also, the paint, the black paint is going to be changed to pewter. Siding change is fine as the applicant has adjusted here. And. It's fine, right, just the way it was.
It's changed to hardy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It will be that, right? We change here. I submitted, and the middle window, which was just siding windows, will stay right now as is. But if in the future, anytime it is changed, we will need to investigate and move it to a more historic type window. We'll come back, we'll come back at that point.
That is correct. They, they would like to sell this property, so they want this taken care of. Yeah, you know, it's, it's funny. I really wish that realtors would disclose.
I mean, we, we do too. I wish it was required.
I know. There's anything I can do to help that. I'll get involved.
I'll just say that.
I love that. Absolutely. Thank you so much.
I'm Josh Tellme. I'm an architect representing the owner. I do.
Give me to put my hand up too. Okay. If I need to, yes. Yes. Justin Frye.
This is an application for system by this is a seven South Champion Avenue. The proposal is to retain the newly installed glass block windows that replace previous existing glass block windows that had been boarded for some years. The, so this application is also proposing kind of multiple options. So in addition to that proposal, there's also proposal to cover the glass block windows with exterior grade painted plywood or to cover the glass block windows with smooth painted fiber cement panel and trim. So at the painted plywood was approved as a temporary bedroom in 2003. So we have that record in the RSE files there. And this was approved to allow time for three light basement windows to be repaired and interior security frames to be installed at the inside of the basement windows. Clearly did not happen, so the glass block windows have been installed without approval sometime either in 2003 or in the years follow. So new glass block windows were recently installed and then the code notice was issued this year in January. At February business meeting, the commission noted that they can support either replacement of the glass block windows with an appropriate window with approved windows list or removal of the glass block windows and sealing the window with rings instead. And this is to avoid precedent of approving new glass block or other continuing other inappropriate boards in place. That way, you can encourage without approval to keep going on and on. So the staff recommendation is to recommend approval of application COA 2500068 at 605 and 607 South Champion Avenue in the Wilkes-Allen District with the following conditions. And that is either the window schedule approval with the selection of basement windows from approved windows list to be submitted to staff or a drawing in pink color for wood infill to be submitted in place of the glass block windows. So that recommendation is based on the CD code 316.11 standards alteration, specifically number 6, 11, and 12, and then guidelines regarding windows and then the guideline amendments regarding window replacement. And that will turn over the mission.
Great. What would you like to add?
Nothing similar to what Jacqueline is saying. There were glass block windows installed behind the plywood, so he had repaired them. From a security perspective for kind of the ongoing transformation of this part of town, we don't prefer to put in a window at this point still. Kind of provides easy access to the basement, which provides access to the entire building. Sorry.
Because what seems to have happened then was we approved the being the plywood to give them time to repair the existing windows that were there. And in lieu of that, behind the plywood or whatever, they put the last block windows in. Instead of doing it so the last block was not prepared, worked for. And so, but I think the point that Justin brought, that this meeting is, we proved it being covered was for the next owner or anybody else to start covering it sometime down the line. But if you don't want to put in the block windows, if you don't want to put in the regular windows because of security, and because we don't allow block windows, there's no reason for them to be behind plywood because they don't give you any additional security behind plywood anyway. And a future owner, they want to have windows in, they'll have them gone. They should have ever been there. So yes, you can, we can approve you blocking about half of the boom, half of the last block. Pouring the windows in, and then you pour them over. Or you put the windows in, paint them up, or behind the security. So there's lots of options. One of those options is not last block.
Right. I don't know if you, just to make sure you understand essentially in location of the glass block, which are currently four inches thick, you'd have a two by four stud and then a finished grade plywood in that exact location. So it'd be recessed instead of kind of brought forward, which is what the class block would have it doing right now. So you have to take the class block out, but then you'd be able to just build a frame with two by fours, put a piece of plywood on it and then trim it out similar to the way that it's shown in the sample image. And then the paint colors are the same way, kind of the porch has the guardrails running around it.
Maybe there's some stupid regulations meetings that we would give a frame so it looked as the other things. And we're, what do you follow? Am I wrong?
Uh, I think we can remove a lot of the silver plate, but. But we want the block.
Well, we're blocked. I just thought we didn't say just plain plywood. He said frame like it was a win, win plywood in some of the focus.
The pass being allowed for just.
We have to love this.
And I think the intention of the two inch thick trim that was kind of running around that exterior image is to emulate a window frame. If you want it to be white on that outside side in order to match the frames of the windows above, we could do, I mean. Okay. Sure.
Just also a cover. And we love that if you want to trim them out, they get a little nice and spot.
Yeah.
Done. Long as the park's gone, or where you can put it in regular windows. But either solution.
Is that preferred to doing windows for you?
The panel, right. I mean, yeah, I think at this point.
For COA 25000667 South Champion Avenue, motion to approve. With the note that we do not want the last blocks at all. And it said the pan with a simple frame out of phone was fine. If you want to do anything, stop again, please work with staff. If you want to do it, store it rather than respond.
Great.
Second.
Thanks.
Thank you, guys.
Hi, good, thank you.
Great, please introduce yourself.
Heather Sherrock. Yes.
This application is for 217 Norwood Avenue. So the proposal here is to demolish a deteriorated garage and then to install a new copy part of the paddock. This apartment includes a two and a half story brick residence and a single story wooden fence garage construction in the 1910s. The garage appears to be in 2014 in a relevant condition. However, deterioration including a significant lean and vegetation overgrowth on the garage is visible by 2017 on the owner's photo. And then staff received an inquiry regarding demolition of the garage in December 2021. A complete application was not spent at that time. However, vegetation work on the structure and further deterioration has increased over the years to the present day. And so code violation was issued in January of this year, and the garage does appear to be severely deteriorated. At the business meeting, the commission noted concern on the newer years that neglected this storage structure. The commission asked that the applicant submit a proposal and drawings for replacement structure that includes similar details. The commission noted they could supply a garage and a parking pad or a larger garage, but the replacement garage shooting for great detailing of the story garage has deteriorated. The commission noted that if the applicant needs additional time to submit a proposal for replacement, they can table the application to a following meeting. So response to the business meeting feedback, the applicant has made information on installation of a parking pad. The additional materials submitted also reference CD code 3342.28. We're looking further. That chapter of CD code is noted to have been repealed in its entirety in 2010. Not quite certain exactly what it pertained to, but it's no longer part of the city code now. So the staff recommendation is to recommend continuing application COA 250070 at 2.7 Norwood Avenue to allow the applicant time to revise the application to CD code and guidelines. The basis for the staff recommendation is the CD code 316.14 standards for demolition. And the CD code 316.22 failure to maintain. And there's just a note in there which includes the CD code reference for that code that had been repealed. And then the guidelines regarding garages and health.
Hi. I have nothing to add. Correct, demolition of the garage and. There was one drawing submitted for. Oh, of the structure.
Yes, the commission at the business meeting, as a familiar team to every time, is being a store garage. So the main support installing a new garage with a parking pad or a larger garage, but the preference is for something to replace the storage structure that is going to. But the preference is for something to replace the store structure that is going to be demolished by the city code.
Okay. And I believe it was in twenty twenty one, it was noted that there was a hole in the roof and it got wet. Everything was destroyed on the inside. And I'm not exactly sure when the tree fell on it or what. I'm not, don't have that information exactly. Yes, when exactly, so you want drawings of the garage as is or? What we're gonna, okay, I did put, there was an estimate of what the cost was, but not exactly the materials. So you want exact materials also? Okay.
And the other, a couple of
Okay. And that's yes, and that's all before getting permission to demo it. Okay.
My dear woman.
Believe in order for us to approve a demolition. We have to know what's, what's going to be the placement.
Okay.
And then that's come about because in the past, things have gotten abolished, projects have gone forward. So therefore there needs to be an insurance set.
Okay. Okay.
It doesn't say that probably larger projects in mind, but
Okay, yes, they were looking to just have the garage demolished as soon as we could get the permit for that. And then apply for the permit to have the parking pad put in immediately.
Well, we would normally see all of that. And also, no list of draw what you're proposing put back. Maybe you draw the building.
Just to be clear. It needs to come with a timeline of when things are going to be done.
Okay.
But we are trying to ones getting demolished and nothing happens for longest time.
Okay.
Just do a temporary solution of that that comes from the solution that's already ahead of.
I know. Okay, yeah.
Do you understand the intent?
Yes.
So we want to make sure it's all on file. And possibly you want to avoid a full violation in case you demolish it and nothing happens. That possibly be and you want to avoid that.
I understand that concern. That's why they asked me to represent and get this going because they need to get it done. And I, that's why, yeah, I'm still waiting on estimates for the parking pad. So I will get together a materials list for the replacement of the garage and then as soon as I get something for the I did submit as a general, I got three.
No, I'm not suffering the money so much as we're saying.
Okay.
Okay, so you know details that are reminiscent of this.
Absolutely. Okay.
Going to add with the structure being the commission that it is in, is the commission potentially comfortable with the conceptual level of drawings for demolition or do we feel more comfortable having file?
File. Only because of the tractor.
I would go, I could say, I could come through our timeline and then you had to come back on as specified by schedule. Though I understand.
Yeah, no, I, yeah, just to clarify though then. If it were a living quarter, then absolutely demolition would be the immediate thing you want to do because you don't want more taking on. I'm assuming nobody's around there, living in a so always try to park their car.
Somebody did kick the door in and I know there's been quite a bit of activity and we can't stop that because it's just happening. So.
I would say as best you can, make sure that's
Yeah, I've, I do have pictures that I took a couple of weeks ago of what it looked like and it's just getting worse. Yes. I sure am.
Great. I'll continue this. Give you time to get your tag and drawings.
Okay.
And perhaps we'll get you on the agenda first.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wait a minute.
Yeah, I'm going to continue. Then you, C O A point five zero two seven zero two seven. A building as well as progress to help the students to build them to forward the historic characteristics that happened.
Very good. Any other special?
Yes, I mentioned number seven, number six seven move to staff approval.
Seven, seven, Brighton.
There's one says six. Okay, do you want to back to that?
Seven fifty Bedford. Did you say your name?
Moshe Mizrahi.
You swear and affirm to tell the truth of the testimony to any overriding.
I do.
Thank you. Kind of have seen.
Yes.
Okay, this is applications for seven fifty Bedford Avenue. So the proposal here is removal of side porch siding, porch windows. Replacement with a new wood railing and new decking. This is the work that we've seen. This is continued application. So that work has been completed. We've seen that before. And then removal and replacement of the porch concrete steps with new wood steps. And work has also been completed. Removal of porch vinyl soffit, that work has been completed. And then removal of the rear door hood and the rear location of the property. That work has also been completed. It also includes landscaping and that is installation of a concrete pad. So that work has been completed. A proposed installation of a paper patio for the submitted site plan. And proposed installation of a horn foot by twelve inch stone border on the outside of the landscaping beds at the front of the property. And so those landscaping beds would include the vults, jack and maple trees and seasonal flowers. And then for exterior alterations, installation of new light fixtures for which work has been completed. And then replacement of two rear doors with new rear doors. Work has also been completed there. And then proposed replacement of two overhead vehicle doors on a contemporary garage. So this property includes a circuit nineteen hundreds stucco masonry home. Both the masonry stucco house and the former wood garage are present on the nineteen twenty space atlas and nineteen twenty one sandmore map. Sandmore details include the side porches and then those projecting or your window pump that's side elevations. The sandmore maps do not include any updates of the house with garage through the nineteen sixty sandmore map. So as far as exterior details that we see, it's pretty consistent. So a few buildings or very few buildings are shown to be excited surrounding neighborhood in eighteen ninety nine, nineteen ten space atlas. That kind of gives us an idea about when this area was developed. A brick structure on this property is indicated on a nineteen ten space atlas with no buildings on the parcel present on the earlier eighteen ninety nine atlas. So by nineteen twenty, this neighborhood appears largely developed, residents present on the majority parcels. And we know for this particular parcel, one of the early residents was a teacher from the property of nineteen twenty through nineteen forties. Although the orders only provides a land value until it's reassessed nineteen twenty four. And we do have nineteen eighty four code that shows the current retaining wall to have been replaced by that time. So at the February business meeting, the commission noted that they appreciate the removal of the vinyl soffit and asked if magnetic tiles on the side porch will also be removed. The commission noted that a nine light grid is less appropriate than a simple half light door without the lens for the rear door location. The commission noted that they understand the goal to spruce up the property, recommend using a simple light fixture. The commission recommended avoiding adding additional stone to the front yard to avoid competing with that masonry retaining wall that is already there in the house architecture. The commission asked that the front yard landscaping be included on the site plan. And note that if the landscaping portion is not ready, they can come back for review at a future date. So staff recommendation is to recommend approval of application C O A two four zero zero five two seven. At seven fifty Bedford Avenue, following conditions. And that is that landscaping portion of the application is continually tabled to allow the applicant time to submit those additional revised materials. That a drawing or cut sheet of the rear door that is half light, a workwork panel, wood or smooth steel, smooth fiberglass be submitted to staff. And a cut sheet for a simple length fixture be submitted to staff. The staff recommendation is based on the city code three one one six point eleven standards for alteration, specifically numbers two, three, five, six, and twelve. And then the city code three one one six point one three standards for site improvements, specifically letter A. And then the city code standards for demolition, three one six point one four, and then the guidelines regarding porch stand stoops. Turned gauges, burned and fell out without patio sticks, doors, lighting, and bridges now openings, and then that way in the store replacement. But that is it. So I'll turn it over.
So what do you have on? Get at the garage doors.
And the garage doors, I replaced it. Yeah. Yeah, I have the garage. It's been a long time. I'm almost given up going back to where I came from and about there.
So short of that, do you have any garage doors for us? Maybe you have a timeline on the garage doors?
The garage doors are specified in the plan. The, I know that you have big trouble with the soffit that I did, plastic soffit. So I removed it. And I found underneath it the original stucco. So we just repaired the stucco. We repaired the stucco and we done with. The, the back door, I replace it with a door that is compatible to the front door with wood blocks, exactly like the front door as requested. The light, it was an issue also here. I had put the original light back on the building, which was there. And I think that's all you requested from me, unless there is something else.
I think there's a cut sheet in the package that shows the
I'm going to replace the old fixture. I put it, yes, yes. No, I want to make sure you, you will approve this one. I put the original one.
Look up like a craftsman like. That's in the nineteen ten, nineteen.
This house is from eighteen fifty four.
The exit port was renovated pretty heavily in nineteen ten. Because it doesn't have any aspects that, isn't that what the Santa Burns said?
Yes, the sandwich is pretty consistent and there's no building that appears on the property in eighteen ninety nine. So it does appear in nineteen ten, so it seems like early nineteen hundreds. And it, I think there's some similar maps that show, actually the base atlas. So actually, these two maps here, we have an indication that the property is stucco, but is nineteen twenty. Nineteen ten, they just show masonry. So this is a possible indication that some renovations were occurring during that nineteen tens times. And that's why they added the stucco and probably other additions.
So even though part of this starting to bear it's somewhat irrelevant, the the house existed, it has occurred for nineteen ten. So, 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 why this one? So something like that. So come on, just a second. Something kind of along these lines. Yes, okay. Give your bum.
The reason I, the reason I put back the original one, just in case I didn't afford the other one.
Where you got a light on there?
I don't think that, I don't think that's a night.
I didn't want to put back again. This is temporary with original one.
It's ugly.
No, it's really ugly, but somewhere there in nineteen ten. It was there when I got it. I'll get one of those. Yes, I did. I got.
You gotta have a picture of what it is, if it cuts.
Yeah, I will follow exactly your picture and I'll find where I can get it and put it there.
Well, is there only one?
If there is, I think on the garage, there might be one. I'll put in, I'll put the second one on the garage.
The, the light on the two doors in the back, is that a security light or is that? Can you tell us that there are any other area?
That's the security light with the camera and and automatically lights when motion detector.
Right, and I understand the safety features.
I think that neighborhood needs it. It's also a deterrent.
This case, it's part of the security system.
Yes, it is. When somebody go by that, when it start to light up.
So if you have other exterior lights, for example, in the front, I'm sure we have there was one in the middle there.
That's a security too.
Are there any other light fixtures in the front?
No, no, that's the one. And then underneath that, inside, there is one that was original there. This was quite undertaken to do this taco in the front. It was all loudly collapsed. Yeah. Yes. Yes.
Okay, where's there two on the garage?
Well, there will be one in the garage, but I would like to have a security one that has a camera and a light that just turn on when people coming close.
Okay, how many pictures are normally on the garage term?
Yeah, one to secure it. Yes, yes.
Not on the front?
No.
Are you even the light fixture on the front?
Yeah, I think it's, I can understand the security back or that is that facade of the property has a very strong presence, right? I understand it's important. Now, I'm not saying there's not a fixture that looks like this that may have a camera. You're going to have to do some more, but I feel, I think as well as the commissioner, is that that particular fixture on the front needs to be made like this. But he's not going to find it from here. I'm saying, if he did find it, great, but I think it needs to go back. This type of fixture.
I'd be happy to adapt to whatever you require so I don't have to come back here again.
So the good news is you got to have your picture for your security garage.
Yes. Yeah, that will move to the garage.
Great, thank you for
So whatever you choose, make sure you get that to staff. One of the garage doors, can you bring?
As soon as you get me the, okay, yeah.
Yeah, landscaping. And then I know there's some at the business meeting, some concerned with the, the grid, the lens, whole light for the rear door.
I think Joseph and I tired of our reaching what about the little white scrambling tile of the railing? Did you take those off?
Not yet. I haven't. No, kid, I haven't done a thing because it was specific said do not change anything until we. Yeah, those will be removed, just in the silicone, yeah, I will take them out. I agree with you. Now when I look at it, it looks ugly. Yeah. I think you pointed out last time. No, I agree a hundred percent with you.
All right, let's talk about landscaping a little bit.
I have a question. The whole inspection of the house depend on the approval of this job. And we've been since, I don't know, August or something like that, waiting. We become friend. I love you all. I really enjoy it. But I would like to know if it's possible to at least give me approval so I can get inspection in the house.
Hopeful today to give you as much approval we can.
Because there, there is a plan there, that the city need that plan approved before they can inspect electric, plumbing. And, and all the other stuff that has no relationship to that. And the, and the, the permit is expired because it's six months been. And now I had to renew it and.
Will they help you today? Let's figure this out.
You're gonna help me out today?
When, when is the last?
Yeah, yeah, I, I, the architectural ground that you have for the. We're getting there, right? There's just some inconsistencies with what is shown, shown in your hand sketched plan versus what we're seeing in this plan. So if you can update or have.
You understand what she said?
Yeah.
Okay.
You can have a restable landscape plan updated to show exactly the terms that you're proposing in your hand sketch. Uh, we first, we would appreciate that.
I can completely avoid that stone that you didn't like and put mulch. Is that gonna be okay?
Yeah.
Okay, then forget this. I'll delete the stone.
Well, they just, yeah, they just modified their, okay, this plan.
Yes.
Yes.
Would you talk a whole set of the following?
Yes.
And so okay with the mulch and the plant teams proposed?
Yep. And no more stone, new stones.
We're gonna delete the stone from there. We are in business. Yeah. Yeah.
All right, gonna get a proposal in for you.
Let's see, uh, it's eight, we're gonna eight. Um, so for COA twenty four five five seven B seven three, that are happening. In a manner of the lighting. I think there's a decision that the lighting in front of the house stays to the arts and crafts model. And just the way the security light, there's a decision that on the back of the house, um, the, the light by the door. Or the security line can stay, but the light by the door also needs to run some crafts model. I think you're also gonna add arts and crafts to garage. One security light at the most. Just, um, just, okay, scratch the bar, okay, all right. On the matter of the landscaping, that's the only other thing that was. Garage doors approved as, as best as. And then the landscaping, we wanted to take down the inner ring of stone, replace it with mulch and. The proposed, uh, maintains, there you go. As far as flowering.
Yes, flowering. We'll make a flowering borders and mulch on the inside.
So just have.
Yeah.
So once you get that solid.
So you want me to draw this and show you how? Okay.
And you can just add into, so you have a nice landscape plan right here, but the good commission is asking you can have the front stuff, make sure that's this. Just on that. Yeah, that's what, well, I think that's what we're trying to do. So to update the existing sort of fancy plan, beginning plan.
Yeah.
Without the, it's just, um, and that would be staff approved, so we ship it out to them.
Yes.
And he and she will, she will.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Concerns? So again, it all adds up to her. We're gonna have a, uh, one, something that is just gonna go through. That's all contingent on you getting another stop to do.
Yes, okay.
It's all good, you don't have to come back. And then as far as we know.
Every time I come back here, I get a better ideas. Maybe I should come here more often, listen to other people probably.
Yes, all no please indicate my saying.
Yes, we will have the landscape to you and. Oh, to her on the, on the portal.
Do it on the portal, uh, just letting you know if you have any issues with it.
I, I'm good in drawing. Can I do the drawing myself?
Uh, the main thing that we're looking for is just that it's to scale and measure. So, um, sometimes, you know, it just depends on what you're comfortable with. If you're able to do that, we can accept a hand drawing as long as it's to scale and measure. Uh, sometimes we'll use scrap paper. Um, if not, I would just have maybe the architect, well, I don't know, be able to notate on there.
Just change what you got.
Yes.
Yes, I will.
It's pretty close. I think what, the only thing we really need is, um, then text columns perhaps?
Yeah, label, label species. So you're showing the true trees.
Yes.
We just don't know what we are. They're in, they're in the hand sketch.
Yes.
Add them to this.
And flowers are seasonal because in the winter we wouldn't have flower there.
Well, I mean, it depends on whether or not you choose something that is ready.
So for, do I need to give you something that it's right now? Oh, okay, okay. Cause I thought I maybe go to Florida, buy some flower, put in there, so you can inspect them. Okay.
So you're gonna miss this, right?
I am, I am. I wanna thank you very much, all of you. Yes, you know, I have a lot of grudges, but not to you. It's just.
Unfortunately, that's a great regret.
Are we, we gonna, yes, yes.
On your next project, you can come, or you even put the application together. We will do it early. Like we have one on the agenda tonight. That before they even start, uh, the, the design, they'll throw their ideas out. That's the way to go. So you save your expense of even, you know.
Yes, correcting.
We're, 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 we're a resource commission.
Yes, yes, I agree. Yes, yeah, yeah. You know, my son told me, why don't you get a good bottle of whiskey here? Let him have a shot and then ask them to a pool. It may work. I know, I know. He's a joker. Okay. I thank you very much. Yes, yes. Bye bye.
Yes, I have a quick question. Is there by chance anybody in four one seven six prime? Nobody else can. All right, sixty five, right, eight, sixty five North Hamilton. All right, you guys are back.
Yes, sir. New scenario though.
Two different, no, this, one is a title, one is two.
I'm speaking.
Yeah.
Finish yourselves.
Josh Tomy, architect representing the applicant.
Eddie Taraj, owner.
I do.
I do.
All right, this application for sixty five Martin Park includes general some aspects of demolition, some aspects of exterior alterations, and some aspects of new construction. Uh, so for just general work here, um, there's a going to propose repair of soffit in accordance to matching existing. Um, and then I think this word for the porch, so any replacement moldings, maybe, uh, will be has to return to match the original moldings. The proposal is to replace all windows with modern ultimate next generation from the group windows list. To replace existing asphalt shingles with new GAF slate line from your shingles list. Replace any missing porch tiles with neutral and caustic tiles. To install standlights for the submitted materials, to install light fixtures for the submitted materials. And then for the east or primary and front elevation, to demo and replace the fire damaged columns, moldings, and porch B four ceiling. And then to use the existing columns to replicate the new columns. To demo the enclosed porch that's sort of on the front and the side and remove the plaster and furry. Then be retained the tile for instance there and then mashing the ceiling to the tub and groove ceiling of the open porch. Type pointing and reinstalling sandstone basins, using salvaged sandstone basins with new basins animated to match. Removing the green paint from the sandstone, replacing rubber roof with new. Installing a new, uh, or I think it was repairing box cutters on the porch. At the south elevation, the proposal is to fill in an exterior door opening with the former enclosed porch area with matching a brick. To remove the steel stair at the south elevation and then fill the opening with brick to match existing. At the west or rear that back elevation to construct a new two story rear porch. For the submitted materials, the porch would be fiber cement room over wood framing. To reframe the hip roofing and remove and replace the rubber roofing with a new rubber roofing in black. And then to retain and repair left side roof. For garage, to construct a new free cart garage for the submitted materials and then the garage will have a concrete apron. And there's some site work, so installation of a fifteen by twenty foot paper patio at the rear yard area. And installing a concrete pathway that goes from the house to the garage. And finally, installation of a wood privacy fence enclosing the rear yard area from the, the house and then terminating towards the front of the garage. So this apartment includes a two and a half story brick masonry, um, house there. It was built around the nineteenth century for Andrew Denny Rogers Jr., who has the dollar chromes club and call this consolidated railway. The builders we know were documents to be of the Knox and Phillips and the architect J. Jones. So a full width classical circle porch at the front and then an enclosed side porch. Were added sometime between nineteen oh one and nineteen twenty-one. A rear two story porch from that same period is no longer exist, although a second story door and transom remain. And so the home was owned by George A. Peters from nineteen oh four until nineteen eighteen, and that's likely during that period where those porches were constructed. So this building served as a single family dwelling until sometime in nineteen fifties, at which time the building transitioned to be used as a nursing home. Before transitioning back to use as a residence by the nineteen seventies. So go to the business meeting feedback. So at the business meeting, the commissioners noted they want to make sure that any replacement windows will match the explore. Uh, which has some concern that some drawings didn't show, um, a match or a rubs single ends. Some commissioners noted that in general, this support consistency regarding replacement of windows. So only one window on elevation is intact and three others are not. Would support moving the window to another elevation or just replacement of all the windows. Um, the commissioners noted that the rear porch is looking to be on the right path as long as there are enough details in the application. And then the consideration of the porch being located at the rear and that elevation having had some alterations over time. The commission noted they appreciate the well done application package. And then in consideration that the details and execution of the front porch repairs will rely heavily on the contractor or artisan who is probably doing that work. Noted the great task and furthering with information from the contractors who will be doing that work. Doesn't really watch out how those details will be executed. And the applicant had, um, offered to submit a wall section and have done so, uh, mentioned that would be helpful. And the commission noted that reinstallation of a recast stone basins will likely take a lot of existing dimension and documentation, hand chipping a new stone on site to match that same restoration look. And they can see the applicant is sourcing from a place that has the right material. It just comes down to the people who are taking the masonry areas of the porch down and understanding how it'll come back together. And the commission noted that if there are areas of missing porch floor and tiling and it's not able to be matched and put back. Uh, they would support replacement of missing tile with neutral tile pieces while retaining as much historic tile, um, hotel history as possible. Uh, so, so staff notes here, would you recommend that the new rear door and transoms are individual units to match those that have been replaced? Rather than being an integrated or transmune that would otherwise eliminate the wooden wall end that goes between the door and the transom. And then for the primary elevation windows, there's like a ribbon of three windows that are beneath the porch there. Um, so they historically have those wooden walls in between that have been fire damaged. So recommend replacement of these multiple units of windows to still be separate units. And then since, um, the melons may not be able to be reused, rebuilding new melons on site covered with wood trim. Rather than combining windows as a single unit and eliminating metal bits. Uh, so for the exterior porch door opening at the south elevation, since that was likely present by the nineteen twenties or earlier. Um, our significance in its own right over time, we do recommend recessing brick for that door entry that's within the porch. To indicate that the door opening was there or using a door that's fixed shut rather than the one that door. Which was acknowledging that it's going to change over time. And then the primary entry side light door that was fire damaged had a single light with a panel, at least on the photos that we do have from, I think nineteen seventy-five, and there's more nineteen nineties photos. Um, and so the commission will need to discuss if the walling side light be supportive, if it's compatible enough or appropriate. Uh, and then final note here, so the freeze windows that, uh, they appear to be a single light window with no buttons. Uh, not quite certain without some detailed photos if they're historic or not, but it was another thing the commission to discuss since currently the proposal. For those freeze windows, I believe, is a multi light window, um, such as something to keep in mind. Uh, overall, the staff recommendation is to recommend approval of application COA two five. Zero zero four six at sixty five North Hamilton Park with the following conditions, and that is that the transom and doors are separate units. But any revised drawings or cut sheets be submitted to staff. That windows are separate units with melons retained and rebuilt, um, and then any revisions there be sent to staff. And that's the applicant either recess the brick or retain or install a door, a fixed door and transom that are fixed in place for that area. Um, that's within that side porch that is going to propose to be removed. The basis for the staff recommendation is the city code three one six point one four standards for demolition. The city code three one six point eleven standards for alteration, specifically numbers one, two, four, five, six, ten, eleven. And then the guidelines regarding garages and outbuildings. Porches and stoops, porches and edews, cutters and downspouts, chimney stores, and then guideline amendments for replacement. That's it, so I'll try to have a really fresh look. You didn't include the, uh, the masonry stuff that people has more details of. Yes, the applicant has submitted a, uh, section drawing regarding the masonry, so we do have a little bit more details. Definitely can discuss if you're comfortable.
My turn? Great. Yeah, I was gonna say, I'm curious if there's a record for, uh, pages in an application, cause I'll try and break it for you guys. Not even close. That makes sense. Yeah, um, in terms of items that we had, uh, updated since the last time, she talked about, um. There was an, the back elevation that had been drawn in order to show the porch, just in my artistic elevation, there was missing, um, divisions in one of the transoms. It is present in the, uh, window cut sheets. Um, and then they asked us to revise the front elevation. I'm showing it as the individualized window units, um, in the front drawing. Which is, yeah, I think further down there. Uh, the one at the front.
I do have a brief, uh, the, thank you for the volume.
Thank you. I don't think these are the current application materials. Cause it also doesn't have the porch, uh, section. I was gonna say the new melons weren't shown in that rear elevation either, so I think there's a more updated package.
You might try and just, we have an online portal, so we might be on that. Um, if not, uh, those final details, since we're recommended and to be submitted staff. Comfortable with that aspect later.
Sure. That makes sense. I brought my laptop. I don't know how we would be able to cast it or whatever, but yeah, I can get back. If they can't find, if they can't find it, I can get it, so. Maybe one thing to discuss while they're looking that up, um, she mentioned, uh. Maybe one thing to discuss while they're looking that up. Um, she mentioned uh, how the front door is a single side light. Which even Eddie had brought up to me, he's like, oh, you're only, you only want one and it was because Jaclyn, in the beginning, I always reach out to her and ask for any historic photos of the property and the farthest one back showed only one. So like, I guess, I think the seventies Jaclyn had said was maybe the latest, like the most historic photo that was of the property, the nineteen seventies. Um, so I think in that photo, there was one and that's why I proposed putting in one and then the one that was there. Was still a one, but if we want to go back to having something like two, similar to what you had been saying, like. If you need to replace something way later in the future, maybe you move it to something more appropriate. It's a five foot opening overall, so it'd be pretty skinny on either side, but.
What year is this house?
I think nineteen oh one or two.
Um, well, a lot of there is so honor law often um, they do this a lot, various times, various states, they'll hold in. For all the properties like a placeholder that's very annoying because it's very misleading.
Yeah.
Um, this uh, this house is its years on maps from at least eighteen ninety nine, so we know it's nineteenth century. So at least a little bit older than the others says. That's what they're teaching. So probably late eighteen hundreds, so it could be eighteen nineties. It's possible earlier, but I would um, estimate another team.
There we go, I think that's uh, I think that's. I think so, yeah, I think. Up there, I'd say the porch there and then you can also see here, so we changed the divided lights um, on that front window there. Um, that we, that they talked about through this dark photos, so we'll have true mountains between the windows and the front. And then this is how we're proposing that front door with one side light at the moment. Um, probably could get two really skinny ones, um, one on either side of the door if we believe that that was. The historic condition with the five foot opening, that feels a little small to me, but um, that doesn't mean it's wasn't true.
Is there an indication that they've been double doors there?
Yeah. I was gonna say, if I was like thinking of what the indication would be, I think I can think of like in the floor, maybe there'd be the pins in the ground or something like that. Um.
Lot of that's a whole like that.
That would make sense. Yeah. Yeah, I was gonna say two, two foot sixes.
But. But they're in the hundreds. They were doing videos at all in there, but different.
Yeah.
And then they have still one of those.
Yeah, I mean.
You normally just use one of them. Yeah. Seventies, it's got one side by. Seventies, yeah.
The rest of the facade, I wouldn't call it symmetrical, but.
It's to me that would say two or one. So asymmetrical and then uh, start by the applicant, it's noted, the earliest photos that we have from the seventies show that same configuration. The only difference is the side light has, uh, it doesn't look like it has moles. Now, the, you know, photos from the nineties or the seventies might not be original side light, so that could be, we should could. You know, find that appropriate, uh, we do, you know, with that door, you know, at least that the seventies at the time have moles. So whether it matched or not, not certain.
So the asymmetrical nature of the side.
Yeah, I guess, I guess we don't have evidence.
Yeah.
Is there for. Can you hold something that doesn't?
Uh, I mean, the, no, that'd be awesome. I actually loved hearing that front, that information at the beginning.
Architect was um, J A Jones. And we could look at other J A Jones buildings in C.
Yeah.
He does that on the right of the.
I know a lot of the houses in the German village area that are of this period have the double doors too, like he was talking about. That could be inappropriate.
The way you probably see that is when we take out the side light. If there's hinges. And bars in the middle that are covered.
Yeah. The fire kind of messed with this area pretty hard. Um. So there's not a lot of great, like, that's why I had no idea about the bay window until uh, the meeting when we were talking about the photos in depth. Um.
Are they serving? Uh, does some degree, it just depends if they've added or if they knew the architect and they added to something, if you search and other things, sometimes do come up.
And I'm talking about this after seeing as well as big name.
I am not familiar, so if they're big name, then uh, that's new to me.
They're not more than.
Yeah, right.
So we've been.
Yeah.
I'd say that staff would support, you know, having the single door side license, that was the configuration we. Have for at least a number of years present, that seems a possibility and that it could have been the wrong store configuration. More so discussion um, just interested in is just the side light moles and.
If you wanted to go to lighter and see if you can think through. They at least can sense or. I'll just see the store reference.
We're walking through the other changes.
Yeah, um, the wall section of the porch rebuild. We wanted to relocate that. Nope, just passed it. There you go. So that little mini guy over on the side, so it's gonna be reconstructed traditionally. Um, the middle was often filled with, I just call it trash stone, but um, essentially just a four inch brick that they had left over. And then um, we went on and took dimensions of the pieces that are there. And obviously in this case, I mean, we have ninety five percent of it to be used as a reference and so they're just gonna be taking the pieces and they're gonna be carving them on site. Based on the dimensions of the pieces that remain. Um, in most of the cases, again, we're gonna be trying to use the pieces that are found just kind of in piles like scattered next to the building, cause that's most appropriate. Um, but if not, um, the company has buff sandstone that they stock. Um, and then similar to what had been suggested, um, we made a notation there that they're going to be hand cutting it and then um, chipping the face in order to try and match that. Um. That look if we need um, extra pieces, I suspect we'll probably need, you know, one or two, I'm sure they've walked off, but. Uh, luckily as well, this is also the most obscure corner. Um, you know, this is not the primary face, it's the side and it's the back of the side specifically too that has collapsed, so.
Um, cause all of that drawings are prepared. Uh, he said the opening to the living room can be refilled. With bridge match existing, I refill. What do you mean, what's current?
It looks like somebody had either, I just, I mean, pulled the bricks out of the opening, I mean, it doesn't, yeah, there's just a hole.
No.
There's not currently anything, there's no casing. Um, I think, I think there was a photo in the packet of just that opening is just currently nothing.
Okay.
I'm sure they made it a door at one point, but there's no remaining uh, jams or trends or anything. There's no photos that can give us an indication or show anything. Um.
So.
It's also, yeah, it's also not the place I would have expected there to be a door historically either, because it's like at the front. So like, if there was gonna be a door, you'd assume it would have been like, kind of around the corner and all the way into the back. And I looked from the inside and there are no signs that that brick was ever infilled or cut. And then, or it would normally be like, if it's all the way in the back, there'd be one kind of like immediately. Uh, to the right, but this one's like brought all the way forward and it's in the living room in the corner.
So basically saying is. It was historically done with means someone. Someone made a whole wall and figured it out.
Yeah.
And based on the.
Similar to. Right, I, I consider this really similar to the side opening where somebody at some point clearly made it a duplex and put that metal staircase on and just. Cut a hole in the facade to make a door.
And we're done, so we're not dealing with the pin holder at all.
Right. Yes, yeah.
Um, split door location is in different than what's shown here, you're saying it's below.
Oh, is that, oh, is oh mean door?
No, I'm so, I'm looking at the gap in this line right here.
It's not on that side of the fireplace, it's actually on the other side, so it's uh, towards the front.
So it would be on this side of.
Yeah. Mm-hmm, it's, it's like almost right at the corner.
That's what it sounds like.
Right?
The, right, yeah, I guess so.
And so it's beyond that.
It's to the, it's to the front, yeah.
It's to the front, not. So there was also no like scarring faces on the inside here that have denoted that they're. Or images, I'm like, we can see it from the inside, there.
What'd you figure out about the tile?
Um, we talked about last time that until, you know, they have permission, I guess, to demo it, I mean, it looks like. From just scraping everything aside and like moving dirt and stuff, it looks to be all there, except for the only thing we don't know is under where the door. Where the exterior wall was framed, so we put in there proposing to just put. An encased cement tile, a neutral color, we're proposing just charcoal, cause it seems to match the tones that are in the rest of the floor. Um, if for some reason they remove the tile in order to put the pressure treated sill right onto the cement. But until we remove it, we don't really know what's under it.
Um, keep that in mind, just gonna go address that if I have you got.
Yeah. Right, yeah.
So how are we feeling about the end of the week? That's not historically a different. Where are you getting this from?
I was thinking that as we were talking about that.
Hang on for that.
I was gonna say, tear off the, tear off the back wall, now we'll need to get a. We will need to get a color match and I did not put anything in there actually, so maybe that's something we can submit, submit second, so. Yeah.
What's the back porch wire, are you covering up anything?
So the like actual back entry piece is just gonna become part of the porch, it's gonna be covered by the piece that's above it and it's extending out past it.
So there's no. You know, once that porch is on there. That break. Then changes the, the tune and what happens now on the inside, right, right, so just curious if there's any other.
No, I mean, the openings are staying where it is, the doors staying where it is, I mean, yep, exactly. Um. The only thing being modified there is that the roof needs to be replaced on that lower piece, so. Well, yeah, there's the porch is gonna be above it, but I mean, that like existing little hut, which I call the entryway piece is essentially like underneath.
It makes it them be built backwardly in kind of. And the railings would.
Uh, I think we have proposed wood, wood picket railings.
It's good.
I'm just the early. On the airline news question. What's this curious question?
I'm gonna leave it.
You're with it?
Yeah.
Right.
It's amazing, it's like the coolest house I've ever seen. Like, not literally.
I'll invite all you guys over. Once the project is done.
And that's not a common to do, site and do after.
It's cool. Yeah, and then just to say that I did it, there's the back elevation added, adding the lights um, in the attic, I didn't lie. Yeah.
For the uh, chimneys.
They're gonna be tuck pointed, but to remain.
But the flues are okay.
It's like the biggest house, it's so big. Sorry.
Uh, close to fourth, a little bit over four thousand, I think.
I think that's.
It feels bigger.
I think that's without the attic, I think with the attic, which is like a full eight feet high, I would say it's more like fifty five hundred. I do. There's a basement, but it's not like a functional basement, yeah.
Okay. Well, we have window cut sheets. Is there all requests?
Um, Josh Q, um, just for my information, have the window cut sheets also been updated and the door cut sheets for the individual ones?
Can you reiterate that the individual?
Actual like cut sheets, I see about the drawings, individual uh, window units, individual door and transom. Is that the same on any of the cut sheets or is that something that will need to be?
I don't think I knew about the individual door and transom um, from the last meeting, so I'll have to submit that after this, um, showing them as being separated.
So basically we have, we're gonna be. Waiting for you to provide us for the interior, I'm sorry, the main install, whatever you have, but it's still there. Um, are there any other specific information you'll need? To.
Some colors?
Um, there's the color, yeah, we can review the colors from the garage. Oh, sorry, the separation of the door and the transom, I didn't know about that from our business meeting, so I didn't put that in there, but I can get that updated.
All of us on the third.
Yeah, oh, yeah, you're right, the brick color, yep, we'll bring in a brick sample for the infill. Yeah, sounds good.
Check here.
Yeah, discuss the. Back here a second, just making a couple of on this here. Yeah, I think, uh, oh, the other part of the statement and it is more of discussion. Um, if the commission is okay with the freeze windows being um, sort of multi lighted mountains. Or if uh, you'd prefer it to be a single light. And the reason that's just brought up is because the freeze windows currently are single light. Um, and that's not completely uncommon for other windows to be multi light, freeze windows to be single light. These windows can also be multi light, so just something to make sure that the commission's not private. Also is for multi light.
Maybe there's lots.
We're open to you. First, we're by just you know. And then simply, would you see that? Particularly question, I think. I think cannot win from where you.
Yes, for the front, for the front door, yeah, that'd be interesting to see for sure.
I think it's.
Sure. Yeah.
Because. Um, I'd like to make a motion, it's like a month of officials asking me, um. Sixty five North Hamilton Park, uh, make a motion to approve. With the conditions, um, that the applicant is gonna uh, provide us with, um, the, you know, infill brick color. Um, and cut sheet for. From under my knee.
Uh, I think. Door and transom updated cut sheet.
Update for that. Yeah, there's a third thing.
Uh, so that, I'm not sure, windows, the, if the window cut sheets have already been updated, like a three.
Yeah, make sure that it's basically, yeah, good.
Research for.
The front door.
The front door.
Yeah.
And. Yeah, and we are reporting that. The, the whole thing that has been filled up with the break is fine. So that, yes, so that. I think that's okay.
Um, do you mean for the front window or are the side light?
Yeah.
Side lighting. Yes, they only, I think the only suggestion from staff was just to, if the commission was comfortable with the multi light side light. Since the current side light is a single light, the door is, has a dozen lines. So both exposed.
But I think.
The matching.
Yeah. Let's just hold that as a, as a thing, so like front door plus side light, let's just leave that as a, till the next time together as a group thing. Um, or, or is it a staff approval, is that what that is?
We were trying to get this top.
Oh, that would be, so I'll submit them to Jaclyn, okay.
Yeah, um, so.
So we're having to.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, right.
I have a question, did we not say that the ceiling? Was that a difference?
Different, uh, probably.
Does it align here? The board ceiling?
For ceiling?
But that's motion. Yeah, I think that we said on another application. That did a supportive wood and ceiling, a wood ceiling. Wood color, didn't that this one, see right there, we said new wire or white blue or a painted color. Yeah, is the proposal to um paint the new ceiling before?
I think the proposal was to keep it wood because.
Cause it matches the.
Matches, yeah, because it matches the house generally and all the nice rich woods that they have, but um.
So again, against uh picture other than.
It's all on fire. The photos are there. They're beautiful.
Exterior wood was painted, um so unless it's, you know, we have some documentation, otherwise that's usually our.
So you had to go up. Through the archives or what have you, find a great picture, it's black and white.
Not painted or something, sure, okay.
Or or even even if you have an augmentation of a house, what was this age? That had a natural feeling. Uh, would even have be this house. Because we don't know this. What we're doing is we don't know of any house built in this time period. That had a natural color ceiling.
Mm hmm, yeah. And are these resources in the same places as the Sanborn maps of the library? Is that the same area that you're referencing? Okay. Sure.
Yeah, library is a great resource. Um, they tend to be the repository for older photos. Uh, they do have a lot of resources online, but there are a few that have not been transferred online and such as city directories. Those as well.
And if we can't find anything, we'll just let Jacqueline know that we will paint it, so. Yeah, sure. Yep.
You're gonna modify that.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thanks. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. No worries. You're always welcome.
Yeah, we'll continue number seven. There's a video for that. Are you here for a particular application?
Uh, number ten. The one liner, the don't redo the porch.
That's what I, yeah, that's what I told it for regular hearing. For regular hearing, we lose forum and we have passed it and. Uh, we had every commissioners who are um had to stay for an application, it's like a line application is conceptual. They still have to wait like outside of their home.
Say your name please.
Uh, Brent Odson. Yes. I'm sorry. Um, we're the contractor. Um, originally, uh, can I give a little history? Um. The original um time we were contacted, I would say would be late last year, twenty four. Um, didn't know any history about it, just was inquired to uh rebuild this porch that had failed. And fell down, which we had some pictures submitted. Um, the owners actually reside in California. Uh, they've never physically seen the property, so they're trying to use um some outside resources, property management. Uh, company that I don't know if they'll retain. It's a roost, roost realty, I believe. Um, they're the current property managers and I've emailed, we have an email group going. Um, I guess other contractors have started the process um to look at this project. And they've walked away, unfortunately, I guess fortunately for us, we've been the only ones that have actually. Been able to pursue anything. Thank you so much, Jacqueline, for all your assistance you've given me and guidance for this. Um, so in lieu of that, the city has been coming down on the owners unbeknownst to me, because I'm new. For this project, uh, that it has been sitting vacant and potentially it basically an eyesore for. I believe well over a year, maybe close to two years. So the city, they're dealing with the city also, which. You guys are first um to to get approval and then uh our permits to continue, so.
So what can Seth probably look at?
Yes, so the uh from the picture Jacqueline shared, which was, I believe, in nineteen fifty seven. Partial picture, there we go, um to the left there, uh. Obviously, you see that somebody at some point in time had updated that front porch. Uh, and I believe there was at one point a screen around it, the current one, but it's long gone. And uh. Uh, the the request was to go back to this concept, so we have to rebuild it, not like it is currently. But we're trying to match that. The, and I think it looks, it's a lot more work, a lot more labor, and I have to do a change order to the owners and they're not gonna like the change order because of. What's required. What's that? But I'll put it on you. I actually, I I have prepared them for it. Um, uh, I I believe. Uh, information is we have a yellow pine, things like that. Unfortunately, there's only. The the ones that have been the historic approved. I can't remember exactly. I'm not the installer. He's. He's available by by FaceTime if we need to.
Let's, let's get to this. So you have a historic photo that you're gonna try to rebuild this that might kind of historic.
Yes.
Pretty detailed drawings of that. The material you're gonna be using.
We we submitted all the materialist and an updated materialist, so there's quite the file because of. The, is it called the staff? They their recommendations after we submitted our things through the portals, like we need you to. Include this and then they added yellow pine and things like that. And this is not to code for height and.
It can be hard.
So my question is, uh, it was recommended that we could put an addition, and we can with the measurement there, the additional. Just another, say, two by four type railing, no more than four inch gap, as as what I would call, to bring it up to code standards. However, we can take that design and just stretch the panel taller, which would make the openings, which would look much nicer if if it's approved. I mean, basically, it's four inches. Okay, and then there's what appears to be a, no, it would be no more than a four inch gap from the bottom. It may be five or six in that photo. Um, but obviously code requires for safety for no more than four. So, um, uh, once we uh accomplished that and updated everything, the only. Thing that we're running into currently with the materials is the style of the tongue and groove yellow pine back then. They don't make that size anymore. It has to be custom made, which is. If you've ever custom made woodwork, it's, I have to find like an Amish person and it's really, but there's one inch to either side of what's. Oh, one, I was gonna say one side, one inch to either side of what the, I think it was three inch and they only have four and six now.
You're you're talking about the ceiling?
Yes. Yeah, which is only visible when you're standing under it.
And and what are you gonna do for it?
I'm sorry. The flooring on the top, it's currently, I think there's some damaged pictures. The difficult thing is there could still be moisture that gets into there even below a roof because it is an open porch. If we do tongue and groove, there's risk of, you know, entrapment. If we do tongue and groove on the bottom, we have risk for entrapment, so. Um, we would just possibly do a tongue and groove and then or or deck board, whatever. You guys would prefer and then uh seal it really well and try to eliminate some of the um. Uh, pasture, because if you have tongue and groove on the bottom, but regular decking on top, you're you're gonna get water trapped in the tongue and groove.
I mean. You come up with the idea. This is what you want. It's either you're gonna be visible.
Correct.
Uh, so I'm not terribly concerned with what it's, it's gonna materially gonna be. I'm more concerned that it's gonna work.
That that's the big thing. If we do the tongue and groove on the bottom, we will, it will fall again in a few years because. Water will rot the the ceiling out.
Open to the idea that. Get that part of work, because nobody's gonna see it. So it's not that. It it's not a significant piece. It needs to work. It needs to not run away.
Um, will you, if you do that, then you run into having to slope it for drainage and things, because then you'll get ponding underneath, because. There again, we're, we don't want to entrap the, I. I'm sorry. Is it something that we, I don't know how, this is my first time ever for this, it it. Put to do a submission for like your gathering that you have. The city has extended, I guess they're almost in a contempt situation. They had to actually retain an attorney for the meeting yesterday. They extended the project to, or there. Till May thirteenth. Um, sorta, he's in color, we 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 submitted a drawing and. It's okay, but it's, he's not doing the the wood port. He they just, he's just doing the conception, the front part. Which was already submitted, I believe. Of the flo- flooring and ceiling, the whole thing.
What you're doing, you need a, you need a drawing showing the railing that you're proposing. Don't think anybody has a problem with you taking the one stretching the nine fifty seven photograph, stretching it out further, do your gaps. Way you need to do it for code, put dimensions on there, do a section through it, do the railings of the scene.
Yeah.
Do an elevation drawing like that, showing how it's gonna actually be, put dimensions on it, uh.
Is a sketch, a detailed sketch acceptable also with the?
But there's some sketching. Yeah, it it, it's just a big project. I think it's important to really do it correctly.
Okay, all right.
I mean, we we have had people that have spent beautifully hand drawn drawings. Yes, uh, that were understandable, but the important thing to. Get the dimensions on there, so we know how big it's gonna be, the materials on there, so we know what it's gonna be made out of. Uh.
Have scale.
And 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 draw a tooth peel on there. Uh, color it wanted to be, is there gonna be no landscaping on this?
No, it it's, it's, it's really, there's no landscaping currently out front of it. There's a, uh. Like I said, it's just, it's just white around the. Um, it's planning to be, I believe it's, yeah, set up as a duplex, a high-low duplex, and they were planning on, um. So husband and wife, one wants to sell, one wants to keep it, so I think they're keeping it. Um, and they would, the downside is they're just, it's been. Uh, close to two years, I think, and and they want, they need to get tenants in it because it is just sitting. So.
So, so get it, say what you need to submit it.
Yeah, will will I be able to get a a copy of the updated what you're requesting? I couldn't write that fast. That would be.
So I'll send, uh, basically me and this and hearing that, I'll just add a summary of the notes. And then we also um live stream these on YouTube, and this is live stream, right? Okay, great. Uh, so I can send to you a link as well. Basically, you can watch the meeting, that live stream is just on the city on this YouTube.
Okay. Hmm, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah, well, it.
Well, I'll have the, yeah, the written list beyond the letters or the official thing, so you can share it with. The owners and the folks that you're working with, and then have that YouTube stream as well, so you can listen to if that helps.
And it should be able to demonstrate to the city that your attorneys work with it actively where.
And uh, the attorney that went and met with them yesterday at that hearing, uh, they were pleased. Um, they were like, oh, you're in the historic district. We understand, like, it's a process. So.
Okay, yeah, you could have approval next week.
You know, that would be the, that would be the perfect answer.
Actually, we could look at the business meeting. I mean, if everything's, everything's complete enough.
So, and the business meeting is the one on the sixth?
Is a possibility.
At the twelve o'clock one, okay.
The possibility of everything is totally there, we could turn it into staff approval at that time and then.
Okay. This is, like I said, this is our first go around and the. Um. I think the only thing that sparked us was the, uh, thank you for the railing, because that's what I was gonna ask and. Because the other one, it would look, it wouldn't look exactly like the original. And then the uh. I know what we need to do. We will go back to the kind of our original concept. I just had to talk to the installer. It it would would have been, um, Jack, when it would have been the original material list. Uh, that we submitted. I might have to look at it again and modify it because of the tongue and groove concept and the drainage thing I was talking about.
We're gonna have to move on.
Sure.
But uh, just we're we're rejected on it and. Good probability you'll have it approved.
With this conceptual, we don't need to take any action, but basically, um, you will have normally the deadlines for the day of the hearing. However, since you're here this month, if you want to submit next month, you do have an extended deadline. Something that would be next Friday. Um, they just wanna make sure to get those materials. If that's ready to do by next month, if you need more time, then it would be the following month.
Okay, yeah.
Uh, thank you, thank you. Uh, Mr. Chair, I'm moved that we, uh. Continue applications, uh. Two seventeen North Avenue.
Uh, seventeen seventy six Brian.
Oh, sorry, seventeen seventy six Brian Row. Yeah, okay.